Okay. Okay, welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of the city council. Today is April 24th, 2024. This meeting will now come to order. Ooh, that was the microphone. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under the sky, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Off to a good start. All right, and a reminder for everyone, we do have Mayor Gunther appearing remotely. He did request that at the last cow, or I'm sorry, the meeting. And so I believe he's with us on right now. Okay. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Long?
Here.
Council members Carr?
Here.
Hudson?
Here.
Hayden?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Sankey?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
All present.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Item four is business. Four A is citizens' input time. For citizens' input time, there's a maximum of 60 minutes. That's set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government. Three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name for the record. Yes, sir.
Good morning. Gary Eldred. I'd like to make a quick comment regarding changing of the meeting from 4:30 to nine o'clock. As Mr. Shepherd said, there's no really good time to have a meeting. And as Mr. Long stated last time, other cities do have meetings at different times. As you can see just by the audience here, the difference in participation from a nine o'clock meeting to a 4:30 meeting is quite different. And as you know, a letter to the editor in the paper, it states that morning meeting times exclude Cape working residents. It also excludes businesses that want to attend the meetings. They've got staff that they've got to attend to. Changing the meeting at a nine o'clock really limits their availability to come to meetings. And if you have staff people, obviously, they can't make it. Even working people, they can obviously come in at 4:30, whatever. And also, is it for the people that you want to change the meeting to? Or is it for yourselves? Many of you probably won't be here in November due to some of you just not accepting the position again or being voted out. So what I would suggest is that you wait till November, when there may be changes within your council members. And at that time, maybe bring it up at that time and say, hey, what do we think? Because some of you may or may not be here. I think it's just a rash decision right now to try to change the meeting when so many people and so much upheaval within the city government right now, as you know. You guys are getting a lot of flack, as you know, for various decisions that you're making. This just continually aggravates the whole situation. So if you would, just try to calm down and just let, take care of some things that are really more important than changing the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Lori Lehman. I live in District Two. And I want to bring reference to item B three, the discussion on the changing of salaries and hours for council members. And I know that it's going, Mr. Welsh, you had talked about how, at the last meeting, how it's going to go on the ballot in November, which is great. Citizens need to be able to vote on this. After all, y'all work for us. And, but I think what people have to be cognizant of, the city council, the city attorney, the city manager, have to be cognizant of is that the wording of this change to the charter has to be in plain English, not legalese, not accounting information. It needs to be in plain English so that people understand what you're actually saying and what you're asking them to vote on, so that it can be an informed decision. Also, I just want to make you aware of something. A while ago, I think it was the New York Times, that listed the most corrupt city governments across the country. Cape Coral is number 11. That's sad. And in the state, we're in the top 10. That's a sad state of affairs. It shouldn't be. I mean, everything should be above board and transparent. And apparently, it's not. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Claire Dooley. I'm chair of the Cape Coral Preservation Political Action Committee. I haven't made any of these meetings before because I work for a living. But I'm here today to talk about three issues. First, J.C. Park. Second, your proposed salary changes. And third, the change in meeting time. First, on J.C. Park. You may have heard that we ran an initiative petition drive to try and get this issue on the ballot in November. Unfortunately, we did not meet the city charter's requirement for 15% of registered voters in the city, which is almost twice what the state requires to get a constitutional amendment. However, our dedicated bipartisan group of volunteers worked very hard and got over 7,700 registered voters in the city to sign the petition to keep J.C. Park the way it is. We got over 7,250 registered voters in the city to sign the petition to rescind your stipends. Given that level of support and given that this council is going to put on the ballot its proposal to increase your salaries, I would ask that you put the J.C. Park initiative on the ballot in November. If you all are so sure that this city wants the change that you've proposed to J.C. Park, why not put it on the ballot and see? I have over, almost 8,000 people who want to keep the park the way it is. When we ran this petition drive, we found people love this park. People have had celebrations in this park. People use this park to walk their dogs, to bring their disabled parents. This park means a lot to a lot of people. So if you're so sure you'll win, put it on the ballot. Onto your proposed salaries. Three of these proposals link your salaries to the population of the city. I don't think you all need any more incentive to encourage unfettered development and overpopulation. One of the proposals ties it to the top 10 city populations. We're number eight. The first one is Jacksonville, which is almost a million people population. I would propose a fairer way to do this is to tie the compensation to the 10 closest cities in population, both those bigger and smaller than us, as a fairer way to do it. And meeting time, if you have any interest in listening to your citizens, don't change the meeting time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Larry Gillis. I live in District Two. I simply want to state that you, as a body, are intended to be a part-time policy-setting body. You're not full-time management. I know you're carried on the books downstairs as a full-time, but you're intended to be a part-time policy-setting body. You should not be paid as full-time management. You have a city manager who has paid a handsome salary, quarter of a million dollars, to mine the store full-time, subject to policies set down by you. In setting your salaries as councillors and mayor, we should see what others with similar similarities, with similar responsibilities are being paid. Comparing you with our county commissioners may be useful in some ways, but it is not completely appropriate. This is because they may run Lee County, but they also run a very large world-class airport as part of their responsibilities. You don't. A major underlying question here is the role of volunteers in the governance of Cape Coral. A few months ago, you disemboweled a tradition of volunteerism here in Cape Coral. This was a major mistake. I think you should reverse direction, reemphasize the use of part-timers and of public-spirited citizens. We have a very large pool of accomplished residents who can make contributions, major contributions, if only we would let them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi again. I'm Dave Kalish, as you all should already know by now. Can you hear me okay? Yeah, when you talk, you got to get closer to the mic, okay? We couldn't even understand what you said about Gunther. So, just so you know, even though it's on my time, I don't mind. The three points or the four points that everybody brought up are definitely applicable and definitely well-done, and the people have thought through it and they've come up with good explanations and comparisons and everything. Me personally, I have a problem, okay? And my problem is, and I can't seem to get over it, is that I don't believe any of you care what we say. You may say that you do, but I don't believe it. Because you go forward with the decisions that you make, and you've gone around in plenty of situations, and the stipend and what's going on with J.C. Park, you say all these people in the city are agreeing with it. We haven't seen anybody agreeing with it. If there has been, it's a very small amount compared to the people that are against it, okay? People are just trying to keep this to where this is a decent place that we love to be in, to work and to say and to live in. And I'll tell you, in the country, number 11 and number 10 in Florida for the most corrupt government, that's something to be really proud of. Not a surprise, though, because that's why we're here all the time. All of us have lives, too. We don't, I have a lot of better things to do than to be here having to display or discuss with you guys that you really, I feel, don't even listen, of how bad things really are in the city for a lot of people. A lot of people are having to move out. A lot of people are losing their homes. A lot of people are having trouble just feeding their families. And it's not right, okay? And it's, I've said it, I don't know how many times I've been here, I didn't count. But every time I've been here, it's been a similar thought of what I'm sharing with you guys now, and it's really, really frustrating, and it's really growing old. I am very happy that we're getting closer to where there's going to be a change. We need a change so bad, it's not even funny. And the people know it. Ask, just go out and talk to the people. You'll see it. And not the people that you guys say that, you know, are for everything that you're trying to do and everything. I don't believe it. I'm sorry, I haven't seen it. So all I've seen is people be really upset and people be very, very frustrated. So I, I don't say thank you when I talk with you guys, because I don't think you guys really care.
Well, thank you, sir.
Good morning. Julia Atari, how are you? I came here because at the meeting last week, I asked some questions, and I'm still waiting on some answers. I put in a FOIA request, and I'm still waiting for the information. And I haven't, I went downstairs and did it personally, and I'm still waiting on the information on the city manager, the attorney, and the old city manager. I wanted their employment files and their resumes. Still haven't gotten that. I was hoping that today, maybe somebody could walk down and get that for me. I'll wait after the meeting. I asked about the CRA meetings and the town halls, and nobody answered that question if you're having town halls, if you plan on, or if you're going to have a CRA meetings. All it is, is just say yes, no, Mr. Speaker, we're not having it, or we are having it, because you're not answering those questions. I asked where the CRA money was coming from. Still waiting on that, from downstairs. We now have two lawsuits against the city because of the behavior on the council of stifling the rights of the people. I think that's really sad, because we have to not only come here and tell you that you're being unreasonable, we now have to get sued because you're being unreasonable. And yeah, I agree. Bring back the volunteers. Those people have to give a resume and be qualified to volunteer for those positions. You're voted in by a popular vote or the whole, and you don't have to subject, you're not subjected to the same qualifications as they are to get on a committee. So why would you take all of that knowledge and dismiss it as if it doesn't matter? Those people matter. There's, they, they're experts in their field when they apply for those positions, and I think you should listen to them. And I was also, I had one more question. The stipend money, is that going to be added to your pension when you leave here after an eight-year term, or is that separate? Thank you.
Anthony Kerr, First District. Good morning, everybody. I'm just here to just talk about some positive things. I'm sure you're familiar with my face. Been here several times. And I just spoke to one of the other councilmen the other day, and I've seen, talked to a few of the others. And back here again for J.C. Park, as usual. And we've, as you know, we've interviewed several people, and, and we have a plan of our own. And that plan is just restoration, revitalization, and to refresh the park. It's really simple, that simple. You know, we see that, that beautiful destination, the slipaway is going to be coming soon and that. I only have a concern about, my only concern about that place, it seems like it's going to be a wonderful destination, is just the ingress and egress there, you know, with the cars coming over that bridge. I was there, just went to check it out the other day, and seeing those cars coming over at 60, 80 miles an hour, you know, someone had a few cocktails pulling out, you know, being a former first responder and exorcating people from cars. It's just my concern, I talked to somebody about it, they said they're going to really look into a study on it. So just to be aware of that, that's one thing that was on my mind. But getting back to J.C. Park, I think if we work together, we do have a multi-point restoration plan, as I discussed with one of the councilmen, who was kind enough to show up and have a discussion with us the other day. And I'd like to sit down with either one or all of you sometime in the future and discuss that restoration plan with you. I've been, as you know, we've been constantly reaching out, but we'd like to finally see some action taken on this plan with J.C. Park. It'd be, it's comprehensive, it's simple, and, you know, like, a lot of cities have Botanic Gardens, and you know the type of residents that are there, and you know the type of residents that go to enjoy the park. Now, we're, I'm not here to kill anybody's plan, but I know the, I know what your citizens want and love to do to their park. And I'm reaching out to all of you. Let's sit down, at least examine this, this plan that we have. It's, it's just, like I said, refresh, restoration, and we can all be happy, and we can all get along, you know, and that's it. So let's talk again. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Joe Kilrain, District Five, 20-year resident of the Cape. My comments today are directed pretty much at the compensation plan. Basically, I think the key point in all of these is that we're relying on changing the charter, taking resident oversight and input on salaries to trust of what we, what the council might do. Just running down the options real quick. Number one is based solely on trust. You would then go ahead and decide when you get raises, how you get those raises, and what those base raises would be. The option number two is really one which adds transparency, and then it comes up with a level base, and then it's capped at increments going forward, but still removes any resident oversight of that decision. Option three really is, relies on surveys of like-cities. And those surveys are done, I'm assuming, internally by our people. And I would remind council that when we look at the bargaining unit surveys, we look at total compensation, not just salary. And to the extent that that could be done by an independent party, it'd add credibility. And to the extent that it can include the total compensation package, it further add credibility. Still, it's based on trust because the charter will be changed. Residents will be out of any future decision on salary unless a further referendum is done. And then, option four, which is done on an increment of a base salary based on population, is probably the most transparent way of doing it. Matter of fact, it's the way the council used to be compensated in the past. I think all of these four measures really are a point to the option that council recognizes that your roles up there has become almost a full-time job, if not a full-time job, and it requires full commitment to be able to do it that way. And there's no doubt, as a city grows in size, that the job becomes more cumbersome and involved, and commitment has to be there. In addition to that, I think that the measures that you took in taking off the residents from a lot of the voluntary boards has further complicated and expanded your roles. To the extent that resident input is not being heard, and I, I think that there's a trust issue in all of these matters that really has to be overcome before any referendum might have a snowball's chance in hating passing. And, and the key to that is not to talk about it, but to take some tangible actions. And I would recommend the first tangible action you might do is to go ahead and rescind the stipend as it is now placed and in place, and to then take a look at listening to people and working with people like at the J.C. Park people who are trying to come up with a solution to that, short of the major issue, the major redo. Thank you very much for your listening to my comments.
Thank you.
Okay, Tom Coy. I just want to keep on my path here for the yacht club. You know, before anything else is done, simple things need to be done there just to make it a park as the way it was, the way it should be, is the beach area, which, these are such simple things, but, so they're so easy to do, and they should be done, and they're done in other places like Sanibel. They had the showers and the restroom building already being built. They had showers already in place. Showers are a wonderful thing for going to the beach after you're in the water or the sand or, I mean, it's so simple, but showers. And then picnic tables, picnic tables along the beach. That area, that's the grassy area, there, there's no need for a fence there. That's no staging area. People come down there to watch the sunset. So it's a, it's a sunset thing. So you, you have all the picnic tables and the benches there so people can just sit. Right now, they're just like sitting on that rock. There's like one rock, so. I'm just a simple parks person. That's why I'm, I'm here. So, and the pier. Mount LaShay's Pier is done. The pier should be done. There's no like, I mean, I was listening to Brian Hammond about, they're, they're in a three-year timeframe to redesign the pier for Fort Myers Beach, I believe, and then, and to build it. I mean, it's just, that's ridiculous. So then, what is the plan to keep the beach open while you do any type of building in the yacht club area? The beach cannot be closed. That, that's a no, there's no negotiation on that. The beach must be open. That situation there, the, the parking, that has to be open, the restaurant has to be open. You got to figure out some way, you know, you're going to go blindly down your path. You should stop, everything should be stopped with the yacht club and J.C. Park. But number one, you cannot close the beach. Okay. All right, thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Morning, council. Mayor's on, on Zoom, I believe. Wally I, 34-year resident. Going to try and walk a fine line here. I'm here today as a public relations representative of a 12-step fellowship. And it seems like, I asked Kim to hand out the brochures and open it up, there's just one there that talks about the resource in, in your community. And I know the daunting task that you guys and lady have, you know, in front of you with, with everything that's going on in our community, the hurricane that hit, the troubles past it, and everything else going on is, is just, like I say, a daunting task for you guys. But I commend yous for staying in there and doing what you got to do. I'm here because I'm, I'd like to hit a, a brick wall with this, in our community for this fellowship. And, you know, we, we used to meet in our building right across the street. Those of us that have been in Cape Coral for decades, remember that being Southwest Florida Addiction Services building over there. And, you know, since the storm, you know, first of all, we got kicked out of the hospital with COVID, not kicked out, but, you know, we couldn't go in. And then the storm came and took this building. And, you know, I did a little research, and our finance director said, well, it's, even though it's the city's property, there's a lease, and, you know, you know, it's, it's up to, I think it's leased to Lee Memorial now. it's up to, I think it's leased to Lee Memorial now, which became part of, they merged Woods Waffles and became Salus Care. It's unfortunate that our community has nowhere for meetings to happen. You know, I was talking to Councilman Carr yesterday about, you know, what's thriving and flourishing for this fellowship and community of recovering people in Fort Myers is like making us look like we don't give a, don't care. And, you know, I realize that the lease says it's Lee Memorial's, and I know we got, we got a nightmare what's going on with FEMA right now, but I'm asking for a little, maybe a little assistance from my city's leaders to get in touch with the hospital who's got the lease and see what's going on with the interior of that building, and why it's sitting for almost two years already, just gutted and just sitting there, and we're not being able to do anything with it. So, that's my ask. I very rarely come here and ask something personal, it's been a long time, but, you know, that's what I'm here for. So, thank you. Any, you know how to get me. Anybody wants further questions or dialogue? Please, just call me.
Thank you, sir. All right, is there anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Okay, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? I see Councilwoman Cosm.
Thank you. Regarding the claim that we are on a list of the most corrupt cities, that is not true. There is no such list that we are on, and I would challenge you to provide evidence of that before you make the claim publicly, because it's embarrassing for us as a city to have that claim made. It's not accurate. So, I just want to make that clear to everyone in the room and everyone at home who saw that. Misinformation and disinformation happened, and we saw it happen in real time today when another speaker then came up and repeated that claim. So, I just feel like I need to defend the city. We're on a lot of top-ten lists. We are the safest city in Florida. We are one of the least sinful cities in the U.S. That was another list that we were on. But we are not on a list of the most corrupt cities. Regarding the CRA meetings and town halls, we did discuss that, we answered that question last week. We can answer it again. I'm looking at the meeting calendar on the city website, and it says our next CRA meeting is May eighth, and we've already had several since we were instated as a board, and those are available through public record request. I would urge you to please email me or email us with this sort of question, it can be answered via email a lot more easily than from the dais, especially like if you're having an issue with a FOIA request, that's something we can help with, but not from sitting right here. Thank you.
Right, Councilwoman Stanky.
Thank you. I had both of those issues written down to speak about, so I won't talk about them again. Third, whoever heard or thought that we have a pension, we don't have a pension, so, stipend, no stipend, compensation, whatever, we don't have a pension, so you can take that off your list. Showers and picnic tables down at the beach, certainly there are ways of doing temporary showers. I know there's, certainly with the design, there'll be permanent facilities that are done, but for me, I don't see any reason why we can't establish some type of a temporary accommodation to have the ability to shower off there at the beach, and putting some picnic tables in doesn't seem like that tough of a deal. So, thank you for bringing that up, and I'll see what I can do to make something like that happen. As far as I know, and I don't know everything, but I do know a good bit of what's going on, I know of no plan to close the beach during construction, and that's one of the reasons why we're not doing some things there, is so that we can maintain the accommodation for parking and to stage construction vehicles that will be required while at the same time keeping the beach open. So, there is no plan on that, to my, to my knowledge, in the, you know, in the whole progress of the construction. And, Wally, thank you for making me aware of the issue around the Narcotics Anonymous. I had no idea that there was a problem with a place to meet and a place for those, you know, individuals that are, that have banded together for continued rehabilitation, and so I would have just a quick question, how many people would need to be accommodated at a meeting? Wally, are you still here?
He left.
He left? Okay, all right. So, I, for one, can just say that certainly using some of the relationships I have and chatting with others that could and would be involved, I'd like to see if there's something we can't do to assist with that, so. That's all I have, thank you.
All right. Thank you, and Councilman Jeppert.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and giving us your input. I'd like to answer some questions here about the time change. I'm here to do the job, so to me, it doesn't matter if it's nine in the morning or thirty, I'm gonna be here. Someone said that it actually helps us to change the time, I can tell you, it doesn't help me at all. My business was completely destroyed by the hurricane, my business is on Pine Island, and I've been closed since then and been trying to reopen. I am lucky if I get one or two days a week to work at my job, and I'm in no way complaining because I'm passionate about my position up here, I wanna do good things for the city. But by changing it to nine o'clock in the morning on Wednesday, that took hours away from me to work on personal, things like my, my business. So, did not benefit me in any way to change the time. But I'm committed to my job, I'm not the only one that makes the time decision, I would be fine with keeping it the way it is because it changes all the schedules. So that's my feelings on that. As far as somebody saying that this is a part-time job, I can tell you it's not a part-time job, it's a seven-days-a-week job from morning till night. Do I think there needs to be some things worked on? Yes, the job description, I think when a lot of you read the job description, you look at it as a part-time job. Do I feel somebody could be elected and make it a part-time job? They probably could pull that off if they attempted it. But, I mean, just this, just this week, yesterday, I was out till nine-thirty at night responding to calls. Sunday, I met with the J.C. Park people because it was the only time slot left, because I was literally booked for the next two weeks, but it's my responsibility, so I'm gonna do it. What else was asked? Saturday, I would like to thank Russ Ringland and the nonprofit is Future Forestry. A lot of the trees you see along Veterans Parkway are planted by a nonprofit. I helped them on Saturday morning, worked there pretty much more than half the day, planting trees for our community. I want to thank all them volunteers that were out there that day. And the Yacht Club, the questions were answered. As far as the articles saying bad things about our city, I've only seen articles praising our city, calling us an up-and-coming city, moving forward in great strides with major improvements, I've read that. I've read that we're one of the safest cities, and I've also read that we're continuing even with our size to have the small-town feel, and I think we still have that, when you see the passion that comes to the podium, that's actually a small-town feel reaction. And, let me see, did I miss anything else? Nope, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Mayor Gunty, do you have anything to add on?
No, the only thing I wanted to comment on was the, the comment, like some of you have mentioned regarding the corruption. I actually, while I was sitting here, Googled to try to find that information, of course, nothing popped up or showed up. So, like Councilmember Cosm, we are on many lists, corruption's not one of them, it's typically a, and that showing that our community is an asset, so I would like for that particular speaker to provide the information that would substantiate her accusations, because I don't think she'll be able to do that. So, I look forward to seeing that in the future. So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I see Councilman Carr.
Just one quick question, it shouldn't be too difficult, the one, the lady that asked about the public information request, it sounds like it was to review employee files. I don't know if we can give an answer quickly or not, but, I mean, what, typically, what is our responsibility with regard to a public records request and our response? What's the timeline associated with that typically on a, on a request such as a public review of an employee file? Can anyone answer that question simply, or is that something we need to look into?
I know I can, I know I can address the specific request that the resident had, as I did get an update on that. The request was received over the counter on April the tenth, the resident was advised that her request would take two to three weeks to complete, and that's because when you're looking at personnel files, there may be a lot of documentation in there, especially if you're asking about an employee who's been, has a twenty-year career with the city, so they can have a pretty extensive personnel file. So, we're looking at almost nine hundred pages that have to be reviewed, so we gave the resident a timeline of two to three weeks. And then, Kimberly's here, she can address the policy in general.
Kimberly Brenn, City Clerk. We have an extensive of records policy, so if something will take staff time of more than an hour, we formulate a quote and send it to the requestor. I looked in our records, and we have reached out to the resident that spoke today and provided a quote, and we collect fifty percent before we start the work, and at this time, we have had no response agreeing to the payment.
Okay, thank you very much for the clarification on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I had a quick comment, but I do see, is it, was that what your light was on for, Madam? Okay, just a quick clarification, I guess, for me, since I don't see any other lights on, and I will actually be calling on you, I think, to follow up and elaborate. I know Councilmember Stanky, in response to one of the members that spoke during citizens' input, had discussed the timeline and some of the processes that we were planning to put in place during the construction of the Yacht Club. I think he stated that we were not planning on closing the beach at any point during that construction, but I do recall us having a discussion that mentioned that we would, in fact, be doing that.
That the entire property, once construction began, it might be difficult to do it in phases.
That's correct, I think we had a presentation to that.
Correct, I know that, I know we've had that discussion. It's very serendipitous that we happened to have the Yacht Club presentation today so that we could address that to Mr. Pankin into it, and whether or not that's even a possibility that we could do.
Okay, because I do recall we had, we had that, I believe, just at some degree, and it was gonna be a little bit longer of a process and more costly in order to do that, and I thought this council had decided.
Yes, and typically, if you phase in a project, there is an additional cost associated with that.
Okay, cool, well, maybe now that he's heard these comments, we can get a little bit of additional information at that time. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, seeing no more lights on, I guess we'll move on to the next item, which is four B, discussion. B1 is the Project Sparkle update.
Good morning, Mayor Protam, City Council, Joe Petrella, Parks and Recreation Director. Just kind of a brief background with Project Sparkle, or Operation Sparkle, launched in July of 2022 and embarked on crucial mission to enhance our park, city parks and recreation facilities. The project is dedicated to pinpointing areas that needed improvement and devising a strategy for city departments to collaborate and collectively, effectively to achieve these objectives. Items that were identified during park tours were effectively distributed among city departments, ensuring areas of responsibility and expertise were assigned. The main focus were divided into general maintenance, repairs, and projects. Basically, general maintenance and repairs were identified as small-scale items that city departments could complete, and projects were identified as large-scale items requiring replacing or upgrading facilities, buildings, structures, and infrastructure. Some things did happen after the Project Sparkle, Operation Sparkle came about, obviously we all know that we experienced a major hurricane. As presumed, all operations were focused on the city's essential infrastructure, and Operation Sparkle was subsequently put on temporary hold. Key management staff also had some transition, and, you know, I wasn't hired till December of 2022, our park superintendent left right when I was hired, so I was out with, did not have a full-time park superintendent until late July of 2023. And during that time, we were also formulating plans to deal with Hurricane Ian, and then this included foreign plans and projects related to replacing key items that needed continuity of operations within the Parks and Recreation Department. March 2023 marked the return of focus on items related to Project Sparkle and the separation of the hurricane and previous project goals. Several city departments began working in partnership to complete maintenance and repair tasks. Sparkle projects continued moving forward, focused on replacing, upgrading, and large-scale items. A lot of that also was our general maintenance things, we're really starting to tackle some of the things that we were missing to get, pay more attention to beautifying our parks and paying, keeping a closer eye on a lot of those areas that we were missing previously. That was one of my biggest goals when I got here. Significant strides have been made in general maintenance and repairs, as well as projects. General maintenance and repairs began numerous areas of attention and have since been addressed and subsequently reduced to routine, routine operations at this time, and there are some pictures at the end that can show you some of the things we've done. Projects have also witnessed some delays due to the combination of hurricane, the hurricane and FEMA-related items directly correlated with each other. However, progress continues with multiple facilities slated to be completed in 2024. To give you an idea, there was a total of, I think, a little over six hundred and fifty-nine items that were marked out in these facilities for Operation Sparkle. To date, we've completed about fifty-nine percent, and there's about forty-one percent total remaining. A lot of that is larger-scale items with facilities, but we're still plugging away and moving and trying to get those done and completed in a timely fashion. I know our park staff is continuing to knock off little things here and there and really working hard to get this moving forward. In regards to our larger projects, right now, we have three on slate, Storm Football is the, complex is the first one, right now it's at about twenty-five percent completion. Painting is completed, and the electro-lighting upgrade is nearly complete. HVAC replacement is scheduled, restrooms are nearly complete, roofing permit has been approved, so that should start hopefully sometime soon. Scoreboards have been permitted, concession windows, renovation, expanded sidewalks, goalposts are all being permitted at this time. Concessions, equipment is all, is awaiting delivery, and we're estimating a late June, early July, mid-July completion date on that. Burton Memorial Park, we received good news there, our permit submittals have been approved, and we're now waiting the materials, and the scheduling has been postponed until the league break, and we're technically planning to start that project in June, July. Northwest Softwall, submittals were also approved and are waiting on materials at this point. June, July is also another tentative start date, so we're moving forward, we're starting to see some progress on those. Just for reference, the Storm Football project is about eight hundred thousand dollars, Burton Softball Complex is about one point two million, and Northwest Softball, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to complete those. Some of the things we've done in our parks, just kind of straightened things out, get some feedback here. Getting things cleaned up and making sure things are inspected, done properly, and things are starting to work and put them in proper order. So this is our staff just completing some of the things, fixing fence lines, putting up new wind, wind-blocking material, getting new asphalt in, and on the left, you can see that's Paul Sandborg Park Bathroom, before and after pictures. Saratoga Lake is the next one, where we're placing handrails. Also, Saratoga Lake, we defined the parking area to the west side of the park, right near the horseshoe pits. And then, that's the last one, is actually Sierra Vista Park, where there was kind of parking going on within the grass, we defined the parking area, make that look a little nicer, make it pop, and give people an area, a nice place to park and have access to the grass in a safer manner. Again, Saratoga Lake, we upgraded the horseshoe pits at that location, and when I got there, it just didn't look the way we wanted it presented, and our staff did a great job of redoing, that was done in-house. Storm Football, the drain there was replaced, that was one of the things that was a nice war there. And one of the things that we've been focused on also is power washing a lot of our park facilities. We have a great volunteer who's been getting out there and helping us power wash, getting our sidewalks cleaned and moving forward. And the last one on the, on the screen there is actually the Multi-Sports, where we're actually asked staff to pay a lot more attention to detail, and, you know, after you go drive on some things, drag it, make it look nice for the participants coming in, and make sure that you're given good presentation, and, you know, one of the things they've been focused on there as well is And, you know, one of the things they've been focused on there as well is edging our fields, making sure our people, our participants have a place that they feel like it's a home and not just where, you know, we don't care. We want to make sure we show that we care just as much as they care about their facilities. Upcoming projects that we're looking to do are Stroud's BMX Sports Complex, Jason Roudal Memorial Park and Co's Saladino Park. That's what we're trying to get completed this year. We have a few things holding that up right now, but we're just trying to get a couple we're getting the projects all in line and getting ready to move forward with these. With that, open up for any questions.
All right. Thank you, sir. First up, we have Councilman Hayden.
Joe, you mentioned the new scoreboards were permitted for the storm complex. What's the timeline for possibly getting them ordered, installed? Is there a possibility that they would be ready for this season in August? Or I know we've experienced delays with these scoreboards for the last couple of years, but what's the update on actually having them installed by time the next season starts?
Yeah, I believe they were ordered. Terry is right here, you can help. They were ordered and I think we're planning on having them installed as part of the end of the July, early August. So I'll let Terry kind of take that on.
Terry Schweitzer, Interim Facilities Manager. And yes, the scoreboards are set to be installed during this project phase. So come when the league restarts, the new scoreboard should be up.
Okay. And again, thank you for responding to the storm officials yesterday in detail about all the work that's going on in there. Thanks, Joe.
Thank you. Councilman Carr?
Yes, two questions. One, financial. With regard to the 41% remaining that you have on the list, are all those items, are all the funding sources identified and budgeting already been complete for those items?
No, they're not. I mean, some of them is general maintenance, so we take it out of our general maintenance, but right now we put in additional funds for fiscal year '25 so we can continue moving forward and knocking off some of the things on our list.
Okay. The other question is, is with regard to upkeep and staffing, do you are basically the same staff assigned to certain parks all the time or are they rotated? Can you kind of explain that a little bit? I just know personally, I've noticed that over the years, it seems like they have a single or at least a regular staff member or members that stay at certain parks. And I think ownership of the park almost becomes, you know, part of a way to get a really good job from the staff. And I was just curious, how do you do that? Is that how you do it?
Yeah, we assign set staff to certain parks, especially our high, highly visible parks. And we've been really pushing ownership with them and really trying to instill some pride and say, hey, we want to make sure that you understand that you have to have loved these parks as much as the residents do. And we've really been pushing to really build up our team and engage them a lot more and saying, hey, you know, you know, when I walk through parks, I pick up trash, I find things I do and show them, hey, this is what we take care of. So, yeah, we keep them there. We do have rotating crews that do mow our athletic fields, but for the most part, they are stationed at one location.
That's excellent. I would just maybe, you know, for further recognition, maybe we can come up with some sort of signage at each park to identify, excuse me, who's in control, who's in charge, who's making it look like it does. Just for further recognition of the employees, I think it may help with your efforts to gain that ownership feel. You know, you see that restaurants, you know, manager is, stuff like that. Just an idea. I don't know if it makes sense or not, but I think it may help recognize staff even more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Stanky.
Thank you. More of a comment than a question. I just got to give Parks and Recs and you personally, Joe, some props. When I consider our city and how large we are and the number of parks that we have and the quality of the parks that we have, I think our Parks and Recs department is doing a great job under your leadership. As I drive around and I see the improvement that has that has happened there, I think it has to be acknowledged, you know, for, for the parks to be in the condition that they were in 2022 and for Operation Sparkle to be put in place because of it, and then to have that thwarted by a hurricane just three months later, based three, four months later. And for you to come on the scene afterwards, to not just deal with the buff and polish that was necessary, but absolute and total recovery from, you know, the largest storm this area has ever seen. The job that you've done at getting Sparkle back in place and, and putting the buff and polish on the parks that we have, as well as increasing the number of parks and for projects like Crystal Lake and Yellow Fever Creek to be in process and coming to fruition certainly is a, you know, a testament to the dedication that you and your department have. And for those that don't know, you know, we rely upon the county and the state for some of these dollars. And, and I want to thank you, Joe, for actually attending the Tourist Development Council meeting in the efforts to, to gain funding for this so that, so that it's not placed on the taxpayers, but, but instead those people that come and visit our area for those dollars to come from the Tourist Development Council and the funds that are, that are generated because of our tourism. Thank you for taking a personal interest in that and going to the, to that Tourist Development Council. It assists me as I serve on that, on that, on that committee, certainly to have a concerted effort from all of us here at the city to, you know, get the funds that are out there available if we make the plea properly. You being there personally to do that certainly speaks volumes. So thank you for doing that. That's it.
Thank you. Councilman Shepherd.
Yes, I'd like to take this time to thank you and your staff. I've driven around to a lot of the parks and the difference is dramatic. And what I want the citizens that are watching to know is, you know, we do have some parks that aren't completed yet, that are being worked on, that are in the process. And we, the negative information is always loud, but I want to make loud the positive. And the positive is go on the city website and it'll tell you where all the parks are in the city. And I can tell you, I've lived here for almost 30 years and I just did this recently with my wife and children. We looked up all the parks and drove around and I was amazed of parks as long as I lived here that I didn't even know existed. And a lot of them are really nice parks, beautiful, complete, done, brand new in a lot of cases. You know, and we have people that even come to the podium sometimes complaining that we don't have enough facilities. I don't even think they realize all the facilities that are available around the city. So there are a lot of brand new facilities that are beautiful. Please go on the website, look them up, take your family out, research them. You know, your department, Sarah, has had a lot thrown at it. We had COVID. We had the hurricane. We had hyperinflation. But even with all them roadblocks, I think you and your staff accomplished a lot and I'm thankful as a citizen for how our parks look. Do we have some parks that still need more work? Yes. And I think we're going to work hard and we're going to, we're going to get them done. But I just want everybody to know there's a lot of beautiful parks out there. Just take the time and look them up and research them. Thank you.
Thank you. Just I'll jump in here real quickly, I guess, to echo, you know, some of my fellow councilmen members, you guys have done a great job. This is a project that I thought was, was a great initiative when we started it a few years back and when we see now with the presentation that you put forth that, you know, it's making great strides. This might be chalked up to my own misunderstanding, but I guess, and it's in the name as well, Project Sparkle. And I think to use the phrase from Stanky, as far as buff and polish, sparkle being in the name, that was sort of my, my understanding from the jump. And I'm looking at this and I, looking back, it's been inclusive of, you know, projects. And so when I, but when you look at the slide here and you look at some of the, if you want to go back to the slide with the, the overview of the stuff that's being done at Storm's Field, a lot of it is, follows that same line of thought, right? Your updates, small, you know, fixes, paint, fresh. And then you see, and I don't see it on there, that we also have, because I just got the budget this morning for the allocations for the items here, a project of significant impact, which would be the turf field. Is there any reason why, I guess my, I'm curious of the genesis of that and how that got there when you look at, you know, the slides and the pictures here and it's gravel and turf and, and then you see a million-dollar turf field, you know? How did that stick out? How did that, how did that get there?
How did the million get there?
Well, not necessarily with a million, but how did that project come to fruition as far as being a part of Project Sparkle, which I see is otherwise a lot of just general maintenance stuff and then?
Yeah, I'm, you know, as part of what we had submitted, we, we put in four items that we had asked for. This was put in our budget as part of initiative that I think was set forth prior to me being here. So it made into this year's budget and I think that was a decision made outside of my understanding of how it got there.
Okay. Yeah, I guess that's a discussion that, that I would like us to have as far as whether that's something that we want to allocate that amount of funds to. I think I saw on your email this morning that we originally had slotted about a million dollars towards it. I think the total budget for this whole project is about $2 million, two and a half million?
Yeah, we, when we looked at the project, there's a lot of storm water and things that need to get done there that's going to increase the cost of that project.
So we're talking about two, two and a half million dollar project?
We were projecting close to 1.8 to 2, yes, yeah.
For the turf fields? Which to me, I guess, isn't necessarily something when you think about that kind of money and what you've already shown that we've done with other budgeted items, doesn't really feel like it's, it's meant to be in this particular project, this initiative. So I don't know about how many of my other council members agree, but I also believe and I think Madam Assistant City Attorney can, can speak to this, but we've spoken with the individuals on the board there and they've actually stated that they would not support the turf field?
Right. Correct. I believe that the million dollars was put there because initially there was a request at the state to receive some funding to do the turf field. The funding was awarded and then rescinded by the governor for various reasons. So I think that the million dollars was then allocated into the parks operating budget. You are correct that there has been some discussions and the moving forward with this particular expenditure is, I think, questionable right now. So the option may be to redirect that back to the sparkle projects that we had put together.
That would be my preference and I'm only one, but I just want to make sure that that's, that everyone's been made aware of that because it seems like a significant sum that's been sort of rolled into this particular project. And now as it continues to grow upwards of $2 million, that's typically something that we would have a specific conversation about moving forward and, and to see it, you know, kind of rolled into this without any discussion on our end is something that I, I thought was worth mentioning and bringing up.
Which was pretty much the delay in what we were trying to achieve, so.
No, I get it. I just wanted to make sure that everyone else was aware of that inclusion. So, and thank you for the update.
Thank you.
Mayor Gunter, do you have anything else to add on this particular topic? I don't see any other lights.
Yes, sir, I do. Thank you for the opportunity. First off, Joe, I want to thank you for all the hard work that you and your team have done up to this point. I know if I recall correctly, we started this back in 2022, like some of my colleagues mentioned, you know, then we had a, almost a Cat Five hurricane. As a result of that, you know, it slowed the process down. Also, I know that some of the work that was slated was either damaged or it would have been able to be at least applied for either for FEMA reimbursement or through our insurance. So I know we went a different direction in some cases. I guess what I need personally, and I see we have about 16 parks that you have identified where we will be going to and performing some type of work as a result of Operation Sparkle. And we've apparently utilized about 59% or completed about 59% of the work to date. I guess what I'm looking for is more of the financial component to an update that's not in the presentation. What I would like to see is, number one, what we've done at each one of these parks to date and what that financial outlay was for those repairs. And then also, what do we have left at each one of those parks? And what the expected outlay is for, for the work that needs to be completed. I know we allocated a certain dollar amount for Operation Sparkle. I guess I'm looking for more of a spreadsheet. Hey, this is what we've completed so far. This is what we spent. We've completed 59% of the work. Have we utilized 50, 59% of the monies that we set aside or are we over budget? That will help me personally with our discussions going into FY '25 when we are crafting the budget to see if we need to allocate more money. If so, how much? So I guess I'm looking for some more specificity as far as the financial aspect of it. And I think that will help all of us on the dais to be able to make a good informed decision. We can see what we've done. We've seen what we've spent at each park. We can see exactly what else needs to be done and what the projection will cost for that additional work. And then we can get a complete overview of all 16 parks. And I think that will help all of us in making future decisions. But thank you and your staff for doing what you've done up to this point.
Thank you. And we can definitely get that for you.
Awesome. All right. Thank you for the update. I don't see any other lights on, so that'll be the conclusion of this particular topic. The next topic is B2 Yacht Club update.
Good morning. Dave Heide, Interim CIP Director. This morning, we have James Piconen, our consultant, working on the park to give you an update on where we're at with the preliminary, you know, the finalizing the site plan design and some input on, update on what we received from the last public meeting. With that, I'll let James take over.
Thank you, Dave. Good morning. For the record, James Pankinen with Cumley Horn. As Dave said, for this morning's presentation, want to give you an update. What I'm going to present to you this morning is what was presented to the public on April 2nd. We had a good meeting with a lot of residents turning out. Part of that presentation was information that you, that I presented to you back in March. So for this morning's presentation, I don't intend to spend a lot of time on those slides unless you have questions for me. But I want to review some of the new information. And then also, we have some additional character renderings, some 3D renderings as well as an animation. And then I'll, I'll kind of present an overview of the public comments that we received with some slides to illustrate how we would plan to address those. This is the site plan again that we presented to you back in March and presented to the public as well. So this was kind of the basis of that meeting and the comments that and discussion that we had that evening. One of the things that we did since I presented to you last time was prepare this kind of comparison slide. So when you look at all the uses on the yacht club, I've created some shading to illustrate those uses that compare the current proposed plan to the previously approved master plan and just want to kind of highlight by the numbers what some of those changes are. From the pool deck standpoint that you see in the main center here, illustrated with item number one, that's about a 330% increase in the pool deck that you have existing. If you remember the previously approved master plan, we were not touching the pool deck. So with the changes, we've expanded that greatly, provided more amenities within that area for residents. And again, it represents about a 330% increase in the size. For the beach area, the area that we're showing within this master plan, kind of the gold or the tan shaded area, is about 130% increase from the previously approved master plan. And it represents about a 226% increase in space from the existing conditions prior to the storm. For the vehicular use area, what we're showing is about 180% decrease. And a lot of that is the surface roads and the surface parking because we've shifted all of that to the structured parking. So although we're showing 180% decrease in vehicular use area, we're increasing vehicular parking by about 313 spaces net with the new plan. The boat trailer parking stays the same in the currently proposed plan as it did in the previously approved plan. That includes 45 spaces, which is an increase by six spaces from what you have today, which is 39 spaces. That increase was really just a result of making it a little more efficient and tweaking the layout a little bit. It wasn't really a goal, again, to have a major increase in, in boat trailer parking. For the Yacht Club Community Center, what you see is kind of shaded in pink on the bottom plan here with the number five. As you know, today, there was, there's the Yacht Club main ballroom, there's the Rotino Center, there's a lot of ancillary buildings that have been added over time. And so the footprint of those buildings as it stands today is about 200 or 25,600 square feet. The proposed yacht club has a footprint of 27,000 roughly 250 square feet, so maybe just a couple thousand square, square feet larger. But we're increasing that usable space by 185%. That's because we're adding the second story and creating about 47,000 square feet of usable space. So a 6% increase in footprint, but 185% increase in usable space. So a lot of those senior center. in usable space. So a lot of the senior center functions and functions that you had in the other buildings have been consolidated into that single footprint. And then from the parking deck standpoint, one of the major changes again was creating this L shape and adding an additional story to that. So there's 185% increase in footprint compared to what the previously approved parking deck, but the increase is about 300 spaces. So just kind of a quick rundown of some of the major plan changes comparing the master plan that we presented previously to the previously approved, kind of pre-hurricane master plan. You've seen this exhibit previously, but this just gives you a summary of the existing parking on site. So total of about 438 vehicular, 113 boat slips, 551 total spaces. The proposed master plan again has 746 vehicular, 158 boat slips, representing 904 total spaces. So that's where that 313 space increase comes from. From an architectural standpoint, again, we kind of drew on the building styles that were approved previously, sort of that coastal theme, picking up on a lot of the materials and, and inspiration from the buildings that we had done prior. And that led us to the coastal themed yacht club building that you see here. Again, this was presented last March and then again to the public. We presented to you the first floor plan, which shows the ballroom space, the meeting spaces, restroom spaces, corridor access, all of those circulation areas. Again, total square footage on the first floor, about 27,000. And then on the second floor was about 19,000 square feet additional. So now we get into some of the character renderings. These are new compared to what you had seen previously, or actually previously, we didn't present these to you, but we did present these to the public. But this is a view looking kind of to the north. You can see the parking deck in the background, the beach restroom, the community center, the pump room building, and then all of the beach amenities, including playground and, and boardwalk and everything that are adjacent to the beach. Here's another view, kind of looking in a similar direction, just a little more zoomed out. This is a view looking towards the southwest. In the foreground here, you can see the emergency services boat lifts that are part of the marina design, the seawall expansion, the boat ramp, the new harbor master building, the parking structure. And then in the distance there, you can see the community center and the pool and the other structures on the mainland portion there. This is a view looking west from the residents across the canal, the Redfish HOA. As part of the planning process, again, we had a lot of dialogue with them to address their concerns for screening. This has been shared with them and they're very happy with the amount of vegetation and berming and screening that we're doing from their view into the boat, boat ramp area. This is a view along the Marina Walk, which connects the parking deck to the, to the rest of the site. You can see the harbor master building in the corner there, and then the parking structure on the left and in the background here. So we anticipated that, again, being a amenity with benches and shaded overlooks that give you views of the marina while you're also walking throughout the site to the beach or to the restaurant. This is a view looking towards the southeast, sorry, southeast. You can see the main pool area there, as well as the community center that flanks that. This is the pump house building and lifeguard area. And then this, you know, there's been discussion of a potential second restaurant. And so we're showing how that could fit within the site here. The architectural design, we would anticipate matching the coastal feel, but of course, this is really just a representative of what that could look like. That would be a separate design with the restaurateur if that were to happen. Looking towards the water, again, you can see the beach boardwalk and the promenade, seating areas, the playground, and the restroom, and then all of the beach amenities. This is another view looking back towards the community center with the restaurant in the foreground. The existing beach house or boathouse restaurant is in the background. And then the beach and pool restroom is located here. This is a view at the drop off there. So the drop off for the restaurant and beach is over here to the left. This is kind of the main plaza leading, leading into the, to the beach area. And another overview looking towards the east. Couple additional aerial views. So with that, I'd like to transition and show you a brief animation that we've prepared to kind of illustrate those improvements and how that looks kind of in 3D as you enter into the site. So this is approaching the beach down Driftwood Parkway. Obviously, the parking deck is on the left. This is the realigned road with access to the neighborhoods off to the right. Lot of dense screening and vegetation. That's the river in the background there. And that would be the conceptual restaurant as well as the kind of restored or relocated fountain in the plaza area there. You start to see the community center on the right-hand side. That's the port de chaire drop off that guests could use to drop people in there. And then this would be the approach to the boathouse restaurant. And we've got a roundabout drop off for patrons for the restaurant or beach visitors. This would also serve for food service drop off or fuel tank refilling at the restaurant in the early morning hours. It gives you an overview of the day docks that are proposed on the canal there, the community center with the The updated marina. With that, I'm going to transition back to the slideshow. Just give me a second, please. So the video and the 3D images that I just shared with you, as well as the previous slides, were presented, as I said, to the public. We had 88 residents that showed up and signed in for the meeting. I think that we had a few more that didn't sign in or showed up as couples. I would say overall, it seemed like there was about 100 or so people there. But very good participation and I think the discussion and dialogue. We gave an opportunity to ask questions at our stations that we had. We also took written comments. And so what I'm showing here is kind of a distillation of the comments that we've received sort of into major categories. And I think the way I've organized these is by comments that may affect or influence the plan, and then comments that are a little more operational focused. So wanted to talk through each of these and then talk through on the slides, the following slides, how we could potentially address those. From a planned comment standpoint, one of the comments that we received was, you know, maybe additional drop off for visitors who are dropping people off at the beach for their gear and guests, and then how they could drop off at the site and then go park, or they may even be dropping them off, going somewhere else for a couple hours and then coming back. So we wanted to try to address that. As part of that conversation, where we're showing a drop off, there was discussion about a possible slip lane or a return lane that might get you back onto the Driftwood Parkway without having to go through the site. We had some comments about the walking distance to the boathouse restaurant and to the rest of the park, to the community center, if you're parked in the parking garage. There's a question or comments about bike lanes on Driftwood Parkway, and then also the building height of the garage as well as the community center. So I'll talk through each of those specifically in the following slides. Operationally, there were some comments regarding parking fees for the garage and how that is structured, if there's a resident discount versus a non-resident discount. There was discussions about pool usage fees, potentially a shuttle or golf cart service from the parking garage to the rest of the park, maybe down to the boathouse or a couple stops in between. Some, some comments on the canal width on the north side of the park and what sort of, what size slips or boats would be allowed to maybe park there. And then also, you know, the displacement of senior programming activity since the Rotino Center is being combined into the new community center, just how that would function. So as we've talked before, with the large amount of meeting spaces that could be big or small or kind of transformable, I think that there's a great opportunity to kind of shift those activities and that programming into the new community center. So I feel like that's been addressed. As far as the drop off and return lane, this was where we had a lot of discussion about maybe just expanding the drop off that we had here for the restaurant and maybe pulling that up and shifting some stuff kind of inward to allow for more vehicular drop off, which I think is a, is a good idea. And then potentially adding again a slip lane so you could drop off here and then do a one-way return out onto Driftwood Parkway instead of having to go through the site and circulate. A lot of the things that we've talked about before with the stormwater treatment, as well as enhanced vegetation and screening for the parking garage, I think can still be accomplished. If we were to add that slip lane, we would just be adding a little cut through, but we could still have the stormwater as well as vegetation on the, on the west side of the parking garage there. There's some questions about walking distance to the boathouse and to the other park facilities. So I've kind of illustrated that here if you're leaving the parking garage. If you're going, so if you're going from the garage to enter into the pool area, for example, that's about 340 feet. And I do want to point out, I have a typo here. It should be one and a half minute walk based on that distance, not three and a half minutes. So I just wanted to highlight that. If you're going from this corner of the garage down to the boathouse restaurant, that's just under a quarter mile. So that's about a three to four minute walk. And those, those walking times are based on a 20-minute average adult walking mile, which is a fairly standard kind of planning, planning rate. So just for reference, those are sort of some of your main walking distances on site. To maybe make that a little more tangible, if you go to the Bay Shore Shopping Plaza and go to Publix and get a, what I would consider a fairly decent parking spot there in the middle, and you walk into the Publix and you hit three or four aisles and then check out and return to your car, that's about a three to four minute walk, about 10,000, 16,000 feet. So it's kind of on, on par with what you would experience going grocery shopping or to Lowe's or to some other shopping destinations. As I said, there was a question about bike lanes. The previously approved plan did have bike lanes that went into the site. Those were accommodated on Driftwood Parkway. You have bike lanes today. Those would remain in the future plan, and it's, it's the intent that those would carry through this recently approved master plan as well. So we'll have bike lanes that lead into the park with bike parking facilities and locations for people to, to come via bicycle. From a building structure height standpoint, the existing yacht club, yacht club ballroom is about 32 feet to the top of the roof. The Rotino Center, roughly 22, and the Harbor Master is about 20 feet. On the proposed structures, the garage is about 38 feet here to the top parking level. It's about 45 feet to the top of the podium there. And then at the top of the elevator core, which is your highest point there, it's about 53 feet. On the community center, we're looking at about 30 feet, 6 inches to the top of the eve, about 54 feet to the top of the roof, and then about 68 feet to the top of that cupola. Obviously, the height of that could, could come down or be varied as that's really just an architectural feature. So with that, I'd like to turn, turn it over to any questions or comments that I could answer.
Great. Thank you for the presentation. Is there any members of council that want to provide any input? I don't see any lights on. All right. Councilman Stanky, you're up.
Thank you. Great presentation. Certainly a magnificent world-class facility. The, a couple just comments and a couple of questions. The, relating it to going to Publix, I find that interesting because those of our folks that are mobility challenged, even to the point of having disabled placards for their cars, they would park right there in front of Publix. They wouldn't be walking through the parking lot. They'd park there at the handicap spaces. And then they would have a motorized cart for, for when they go inside. So take a little exception of that being apples and apples. The, I was interested in that parking that is shown on what would be, I believe it would be the southeast side of the entire facility. There are parking spaces along where the community center would be there and on both sides of the road, one longitudinally and the other one perpendicularly. What are those parking spaces identified for? Is there an identification of who parks in those spaces?
The thought would be that those would be, a portion ADA and then also community center parking. And then on the drop, this was really intended as more, more of a drop off here on the east side of the road.
Right.
So again, you could drop off people on here, and then they could access the park facilities from there. But as far as the parking right adjacent to the community center here, that would be split between ADA access and then just regular parking.
Because my, my concern would be for the, if you will, mobility challenged couple, that you can drop one off there. That's great. But then the car has to go get parked, and then you have the other mobility challenged member of the household having to walk that distance. And so if there's something that we can do that would allow for a reasonable number of, of spaces for, for those folks, you know, in, in that corridor, I, I think we certainly need to consider that. Or I've also heard some talk of the, the boathouse or, or the facility providing valet service, to and, to and from, so that they could drop the car off there, both exit there at the boathouse, or both exit at the community center and have the car taken to a valet lot and whatnot. But then obviously, that brings an added cost, whether it's voluntary from tipping the valet or an actual fee to valet park. So that, that would, still is an open question for me. And, and last is, on that canal on the north end of, of the property, there's, there's kind of a flaw in the representation of that. It doesn't show or indicate any of the docks and lifts that those residents have in that canal that take up space in the canal. So two concerns there is the ingress egress there by the larger boats. Obviously, having all of that, you know, if you will, tie-up facility there, you know, just to the north of the, of the trailer parking, one would think then that those would typically be larger boats that would go in and tie up there. And is that, is that meant for day use? Or is that under the charge of the marina where, where they can pay a fee and keep their boat there? And if that were true, then what's to stop some relatively unsightly vessels positioning themselves there for the citizens that live across the canal from that to look at? We had a view that was provided, which is awesome, that shows based on the, the foliage plan that, that their view is going to be a, a nice view. You'd hate to have that obstructed by the USS Minnow that happens to put itself there forever. So just thoughts around that would be interesting to hear what your take is on that.
Okay, yeah. So in the planning of, of the, I guess, the plan to get to this point, there's been discussions about that being day docks or leasable space. I think the current discussion that we've had is that it's probably more of a day dock transient or temporary facility. As far as boat size within there, you're right, this view doesn't go quite to where the residential docks are. But we've got about 55 feet between the edge of those docks and the proposed edge of our, of our new dock. So that would yield about a 30 to 32 foot boat maximum that we would want back in that canal.
Okay. Well, what you want, who wants to go back there unless, unless you've got, you know, someone on a vessel that has authority to tell someone not to go there, you're, you're not going to stop them. So, so that, that could be a tough one. And so whoever, who would, who would be policing that and, and setting that expectation of who can, who can't go there? And you'd, you'd deal with maritime rights and, and whatnot. Could, could be a little tough for those residents that are there. You come in, the longer boats are wider boats. And so as And so as if you bring in a, you know, if you bring in a 40 or 50-foot vessel there and that boat is now going to, you know, put, you know, 14, 16 feet out off of that dock for someone to bring their own boat home to put in their lift and not be able to turn it around to get in there, it could end up being tough.
Understood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Carr?
Yep. I had a similar concern and question with regard to the handicap parking as Councilman Stanky. So I think we need to really look at that moving forward. The other thing is too, I think the view that was shown, excuse me, from the adjacent areas into the parking for the boat ramp, that was from the, it was not from the south. I mean, correction, it wasn't looking south, that was looking west, I believe, right? Is the view looking south from Lennox Court property is going to be the same view?
It'll be similar. We have a very similar landscape treatment, but the view that I showed was looking from...
Looking to the west, correct?
Yes. If I said looking south, I was...
No, you said looking west, but I think Councilman Stanky kind of complimented the fact that it was, you know, it looked good, but I don't think we've seen that view in any of these presentations. It doesn't look as dense to me, I mean, based on just the layout of the landscape. So the view looking south from the property owners there...
From here south.
...may be significantly different from those looking west. And I think we need to consider that too. We want to make sure that we have a similar view facing south. I'd have concern too about the day docking and the ability for those homes to have, you know, better, you know, good access ingress egress for their vessels that they currently have, you know, backing out of a dock and, you know, turning around with 30 feet may not be adequate for some of the boats in that area. So we may just, you know, whether we need to have those day dock locations available or not, may be something we discuss. I don't know. It would save some money if we didn't need them. But I don't know. If the need's not there, I don't think we should do that maybe just because that canal is not that wide, based on the type of vessel you can have at those homes with the access there. So, thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Yeah, and then for me, just a quick comment. We talked about the... Mr. Mayor, do you have anything you wanted to add?
Yes, sir. I do. Were you going to make a comment first?
Just a real brief one, yeah. We talked about it previously, I think, you know, just a minor concern, but could potentially become an issue with the roundabout down there by the boathouse. I think you even mentioned it just briefly in the presentation as far as the ability for the distributor trucks to, you know, load and unload, or unload rather, product which happens multiple times weekly at restaurants. Is it in theory going to take place right down there at the roundabout? Or are we thinking that somehow we're going to utilize that item 21 here next to the community center for that?
The thought was that the food service drop offs as well as fuel tank refilling would happen in this area. We have run auto turn on that, so we've kind of run trucks around that radius to make sure that it works. 21 was more intended for deliveries that could back in to drop off at the community center. And then we also had a dumpster that was planned within that 21 area for like a compactor.
So your models have shown that it is adequate, I guess, within that turnaround for a regular-sized box drop, I guess, to provide the... Okay. I just want to make sure that was sort of accounted for in the grand scheme. There's a lot bigger issues you guys are dealing with, but that to me could be a potential big one if everyone sort of bottlenecks down to that roundabout two, three times a week and they're, you know, loading, unloading. So, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of comments that I wanted to make. First off, you know, I think what we've gotten to this point is much better than what we started with. So I'd like to thank Henry Horn for all their efforts. I know we keep making recommendations. I know getting more community input, and we're making the modifications. I think this will be a gem of our city once it's completed. Some of the comments that I heard today was on the operational aspect of the yacht club, which I think we do have to have that discussion at some point. And I think now we're still in the design and construction aspect. At some point, we'll have to have those operational discussions, but I think they need to be, kind of be separate. I also have somewhat of a concern with the small canal on the northern part of the yacht club area there that is fairly narrow. So I think we have to make sure that we're being a good neighbor. I'd hate to allow parking, as much as I would like to see additional boat parking, because I think that's important for this facility to have as much boat parking for either residents or visitors to come by boat. But what we don't want to do is have boats parallel park on that particular seawall or a catwalk there, and then it impedes a resident from being able to pull out of their boat slip safely out there. So I think it's something that we definitely need to take a look at that component and make sure that we are being a good neighbor. But overall, I think it's looking great. One request that I would ask from staff, very similar to, you know, the regular updates that we get with the Hawthorne well up in the north, I would like to start getting at least monthly reports on the progress of our Army Corps and FDEP permits. You know, we applied for these permits back in July, and here we are almost halfway through 24, and we still haven't gotten them. So I think that's, in my opinion, unacceptable. So I want to make sure that I have a good understanding of exactly what we're waiting for. And I think the best way to keep staff apprised of exactly what's going on, you know, I know we have, you know, a variety of companies that may be providing input for this project, but we all know that the seawalls and the dockage is the first thing that needs to be constructed. So we want to make sure that we're moving those permits along. And if any of us, you know, I'm willing to intervene myself with the Army Corps, that means we have to go to Jacksonville to have a sit-down meeting. I know, I believe myself and Councilmember Hayden, when we were up in Tallahassee here recently, we had a discussion with FDEP on some of these permits as well. So I want to make sure that, you know, we are dotting in our i's, crossing our t's, giving them the information that they need so we can get across the finish line and have the permit in hand. So if we can start to get monthly updates on the permitting process for the yacht club, it will be helpful for me to have a good understanding exactly where we are and what they're looking for so we can get the permit issued. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I don't see any other lights on. Yours was previously on. Okay. All right. With that, I'd just thank you for your efforts and your ongoing efforts in the presentation this morning.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just one side note, we do have a second follow-up public meeting on May 7.
Okay.
So just a note for that, then we'll be returning to you after that meeting as well.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right. And before we get into the last item topic, I think we'll take a quick 10-minute break, come back, reconvene, I guess, 10:50.
Okay, welcome back. We will now reconvene the meeting. I see we'll move to the next discussion topic, which is for B. Item three, proposed charter change. And I think this was Councilmember Welsh that brought it forward, so if you want to take the floor, have at it.
Sure, I brought this forward a little while back. Came back to A COW. We had some discussions on it, and I believe everyone's had a chance to discuss their opinions to the city attorney, and I believe he's brought forward what appears now four different options for us to discuss. So I'm gonna kick it over to him to kind of go over them briefly, and then I'm interested in hearing everyone else's thoughts on what's proposed before us. Thank you.
It's your show.
Thank you, just to surmise, so there are four proposals now as it exists right now. Proposal number one was the one that was ultimately discussed at the previous committee of the whole. So it is unchanged, unmodified. In reference to proposal number two, what I attempted to do in speaking with the original sponsor, Councilmember Welsh, in trying to encapsulate the discussion that occurred at the previous committee of the whole, I ultimately came up with proposal number two based upon your input and the input of Councilmember Welsh. In reference to proposal number three, that was a separate concept that was provided to me by another member of the council, and I memorialized that by creating that third proposal consistent with what is required pursuant to Florida law. And then lastly is proposal number four, which was submitted to me by another council member in consideration for the council. The concept was provided to me, and I ultimately modified that to be in compliance and consistent with the requirements in Florida law, including the ballot language and the subsequent amendment to the city's charter. So to provide a little bit of additional clarity in my conversations with you individually, proposal number one, two, and three will, as it's written right now, presently before you, would be effective as of the year 2026. Essentially, after the election takes place, it'll be applied to those elected officials that happened after the election in November of 2026. Proposal number four is different. That will become, if it is agreed upon by you all, that talks about it becoming effective as of January 1st after this election, so January 1st of the year 2025. These are the proposals as they exist. The other mechanism, just so you understand, proposals one, two, and three set forth parameters. Those parameters ultimately will be encapsulated by way of an ordinance, and that has the legal effect to eliminate any other type of compensation that may be provided to the elected officials via a resolution. So any resolution talking about any type of monetary compensation, excuse me, monetary allowances or stipends, if were to pass by the electorate, will become null and void, but it would be effective up and through November of 2026. Proposal number four eliminates it immediately based upon its language and the effectiveness of the amendment to the charter. And with that, if there's any questions, I believe that kind of identifies the parameters of these four proposals. And I'm here for any questions that you may have or clarifications.
All right, thank you for that. Councilwoman Cosdine.
Thank you. I do have two questions. My first is the verbiage in one, two, and three. They all say eliminate payments for expenses.
That is correct.
That's the stipend?
That would be the stipend, because the stipend is by resolution, because this requires it by ordinance. It would be eliminated as of formality, because there you cannot have compensation unless it's by ordinance.
So when you say expenses, because I had someone reach out confused about this, does that mean also expenses related to performing the job?
That is also correct. This was, these proposals, at least one, two, and three, were meant to encapsulate all the expenses and the compensation for all the council members, so that there is clarity in the enacting resolution that would subsequently be authorized by the council for your total compensation in pay.
So for example, the mayor is on a trip right now for work for council. That would be paid out of his own pocket?
It would be reflective of the, depending on which proposal you go to, one, two, or three, it would be reflected within the compensation.
So if one council member travels a lot more than another, if one council member doesn't travel at all, then they, in theory, are making more money?
They, in theory, wouldn't be expending those financial resources in furtherance of their obligations as an elected official.
Okay.
As it's written right now, so remember, the original version was ultimately meant to allow you all to set those parameters by resolution that would be discussed at a committee of the whole to set that metric, right?
Okay, so you're saying even though it's not in this, it could still be something we could sort out as a council in a different venue?
That is correct. Depending on which version or which modified version, because each proposal is different in its own ways, and proposal number four maintains that one provision. You all can make a decision to not delete that portion from proposals two or three, and the reason why I would say two or three is because in proposal number one, you have the ability to set your total compensation by way of an ordinance, and that will delineate what the salary is and what any other allowances that you would be entitled to based upon your discussion as a collegial body setting forth the parameters for that compensation. In regards to proposals number two and three, as it's written right now, that would not be a factor. As for proposal number four, that would still be something that the mayor, for your example, would still be able to receive that reimbursement for travel, because that provision is not deleted.
Okay, so for me, I'll go ahead and share what I think. I like the second option with that change that we just talked about, using the language prohibit monetary stipend instead of eliminate payments for expenses. I think two is the, I think all of these are really gonna have trouble on the ballot, but I think two is the fairest, and I think that's the way to go. Thank you.
Councilwoman Carr.
Thank you. I like elements of two, but I favor four, and I'll tell you why. Four, the major distinction between four and two is two makes it an ordinance process moving forward, where the council sets its own salary by ordinance with public participation, but it still not, it still deviates from our current system of doing it by referendum. Proposal four retains that in the charter and continues forward by referendum vote from modification to compensation for council. The amounts are very similar, it's just worded differently with the per capita of those calculations, when you base it on the currently, the most current estimate by the U.S. Census of 216,992, that calculates out with the numbers currently listed per capita of 60,757 and 73,077 for the mayor. It also incorporates the COLA, as the other does, but it reduces the max annually to 6 percent, it caps it at 6 percent from the 10 percent in option two. Just think it's a more reasonable number moving forward. Like I said, and the effective date is much sooner, however, it's because it's approved by the voter. If the voter is approved by referendum and increased the compensation, there's no need to delay, because there is no personal benefit. We're not making it ourselves, therefore, the two-year delay is no longer required and necessary, in my opinion, anyway. So if the voters approve it, it becomes effective January 1, and it would be adjusted annually thereafter, as it is now with our COLA. So I think that option four is more in line with our currently, you know, process within the charter. It also does clearly remove the monetary stipend that exists, and that would occur January 1 as well, much sooner than the other option. And it does still allow us to recoup expenses related to travel, just as you mentioned, that you want to add into number two. So four encapsulates everything in number two, but it also retains the process we currently have in the charter that requires a referendum vote for compensation change. But not every year, just if you had a significant change you wanted to make moving forward. There are things built in for an automatic increase, as we do now with the COLA, in addition to population. But because of the potential for large increases, I thought it'd be important to cap it at a reasonable number, and I think a 6 percent is reasonable as the maximum annual increase moving forward. So that's where I favor number four and the reasons for it. Like I said, the numbers from the compensation overall number are very similar to two, but it's just the way it's completed and also the duration of time before we have to enact it. So that's the reason I like four over the others. Thank you.
Councilwoman Cosdine.
Thank you. Just coming back to say something that I forgot. I do think four is the best overall, but there was one thing about it that was a deal breaker for me, and I could be wrong. Alex, it says cents, basically. It talks about cents when you're talking about our salary. So on the ballot, would it actually just say 34 cents for the mayor per resident, or would it say a number based on the current population?
So the ballot language is, this is what the ballot language is, and if you remember, I have to maintain 75 words. The ballot language will say 0.34 per capita for the mayor and 0.28 per capita for the council members. That is the ballot language. I can't put the number in because that would run afoul of Florida law.
So to me, that's confusing, and it doesn't tell the voter anything about the total that's gonna be paid. I mean, I could do the basic math in my head, but I don't think everyone thinks that way. So if we could do like a hybrid of four and two, where we use the actual salary amount versus the cents, I think that would be a good compromise.
Councilwoman Stankin.
Thank you. I mean, for me, my interest in this referendum is not for me or for any member on council right now, but it's for the city moving forward. The charter right now, as it relates to the responsibilities of a council member, are totally misleading to a candidate that would look to run for this responsibility. And so between that and the way compensation is established, when you look at the way that all, you know, the other major cities that were researched and given to us to take a look at, they've modernized those responsibilities and the compensation surrounding them. So ours is relatively archaic at the moment, and so I'm interested in the referendum, not just around the compensation, but full and fair disclosure of truly what's required to do the job. With that being said, the four proposals that we have, I really can't support any one of them in totality the way they currently are. Proposal number two is more in line with a recommendation that I made based on the way another city handles it. I took a look at how every single city provided to us to review, trying to glean some of the best practices, if you would, rather than trying to recreate the wheel. So I took what other cities had done and compared all of them, and that's where proposal number two, in its basic form, was something that I recommended. Having a 10 percent cap allows you to take both a scope of job component and a cost of living component into account on an annual basis. The scope of the job can change, and you're not necessarily going to change what's written in the charter as far as what's considered for, you know, to adequately do the job. But certainly those sitting in these seats understand the demands that are put on where they need to be when and what they need to participate in. I'm not in favor of removing expense reimbursement for the same reasons that Councilmember Cosdine mentioned. You know, for one member to travel to Tallahassee for legislative days and to Orlando for Florida League of Cities and all the things that we involve ourselves in so that we are best prepared, best educated, and best connected to do our jobs, if one council member does all of it and another council member does none of it, the one that does none of it ends up being compensated on a net basis more than the person that's out doing the work. And so I would not be in favor of any change that would not allow the travel expenses required to properly be prepared to do the job and to do the job. So I think that that needs to be considered in the referendum, that those types of travel expenses are still accommodated, and, you know, the per capita, it's not just necessarily upon, about per capita. As it relates to the 75th percentile, when you think about the 75th percentile, basically you're putting yourself in a position where 25 percent are higher. And so it's okay to talk about that, but when you talk about it in the context of the fact that we are the second-largest geographic city in the state, and we are, depending upon who's counting, the seventh or eighth most populated city in the state, those certainly are not at the 75th percentile. When you consider the fact that we are 55 percent built out and we have a 45 percent to-go, there's a lot more work in the to-go part than there is in a city that is 100 percent built out, and the job is just to maintain what is already there. So the magnitude of the job and the scope of the job is certainly not at the 75th percentile when it comes to responsibility of the job and what this job faces over the next 20 or 30 years. So I'm not a big fan of 75th percentile, because it certainly doesn't represent scope of the job and responsibility of the job based on our city's development at this moment and what is required moving forward. So for me, if there was a way to use proposals So for me, if there was, if there was a way to use proposal number two. But include those travel expenses being reimbursable, that would be, that would be the magic combination for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I'll, I'll contribute here a little bit to the discussion. I think I found myself in a similar position as Councilman Stiney. With regards to not, not being really married to, to any of the four that are presented here for one reason or another, but that becomes particularly problematic as is evidenced by. The city attorney, if enough of us feel that same way because we're on a pretty strict deadline as far as. Meeting of the minds to get something put forth. I think this is pretty much it.
Well, I've got, I've got. May 1, I've got May 15, but if there's no action by May 15. There's only one, I need to have a first reading. And I believe we have one council meeting in June before you go on hiatus. So I've, I've, I've put in a two-week buffer in the abundance of caution to see if there is a mechanism. For, for five of you to come to an agreement, but I'm, so far I'm not getting that.
And it takes five.
And it does take five.
Understood. Yeah. So for me, just to provide, I guess, my, my insight, I think. The ones that I'm looking at this through and I think Councilman Stiney had alluded to it is, is the, actually to steal another one of his words is archaic. It's a little bit. Based on the, the sample that we've provided, which is pretty significant with regards to. Other municipalities and counties around the state. I think it's, well, we got a list of about 16 of them. If I'm not mistaken, just about every one of them, the discretion is up to the council to set that to one degree or another. I think one of them maybe was to say that it was in an amount not to exceed. That of the Superior County Commission. And so the way that we do things currently are archaic in, in that regard. And so. For me, I appreciate Councilmember Welsh bringing this forward to sort of modernize. The way that we do things or not even just bring it up to what, what we typically see in other institutions or municipalities around the state. That of course has led us to, you know, the, the discussion that we're having now. So to get back to that, I think it's reasonable for me to decide to move forward if we did. Proposal one, the original proposal, which is hey, it's set forth by ordinance, but institute some sort of cap. I know there's, there's a limited amount of words and we spent a lot of. Words in that particular one mentioning, I guess, when it comes into effect, which I think has been limited to some extent in these other three. If we were to basically say that it was set by ordinance and then potentially set a rate not to exceed. Whatever that might be, whether it's incorporating the 10% here annually. Or in a rate not to exceed a certain percentage of the Lee County Commissioner's total compensation. I think that's, that's a reasonable buffer as far as the ceiling, considering the obligations of theirs are presumably larger than the city. So something like that where it sort of gives you that, which is very comparable to everyone else with regards to having. The authority to set that themselves through ordinance. So we didn't have to go through. You know, the referendums and those sorts of things, which is admittedly uncommon. Then, then that would be something I could support, but, but beyond that, I think that we're, this would be all for not. So that's my two cents. Anyone else want to chime in? I know. Go ahead, Councilmember Welsh.
And I do need to hear from, from everyone. I hate to do this to you all, but I do need to hear from all of you.
Everybody's got to chime in. Understood. And I know the mayor's, is here as well, so maybe we'll hear from him after Councilmember Welsh.
Yeah. We have to, you know, I, I came forward with, with option one. I think it, it fixes it in the charter. I don't think that the charter is meant to lay out what the compensation should be. The charter is basically the framework for how. You know, the city runs, not, not for compensation for council members, but I couldn't, I couldn't get behind. A hybrid of option two and four as well. Like other council members have said before me, this, looking at what's in there now obviously is. Outdated and, and not comparable. So. Whatever we, we decide as a group, I can support. I don't think I would support option three, but I could support one, two or four. Thank you.
Got it. Mr. Mayor, if you're there, we'd love to hear from you. The city attorney says that we all have to chime in on this one.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the opportunity. Yeah, I think if you look at all four options. I think each one of them are flawed in, in some fashion. So if I had to. You know. Pick one particular option that we have available. And it's based solely on how it's written, I wouldn't be in favor of any of them. When you look at the first. Number two and three. I agree with what Councilmember Stiney stated that the expenses. You know, we have to be able to be reimbursed from our expenses. Because exactly like he said, you may have a, a particular council member who's extremely involved, traveling around the state. And if they have to pay for their own expenses. All that is going to do to a future council member is probably deter them from doing that. And I think that we should be encouraging them to do that. So their expenses should at least be reimbursed. Now for me, as you all are aware, I'm very involved in the Florida League of Cities. But with that being said. The city pays for my expenses and then the Florida League of Cities reimburses the city. So there's no burden on the city itself. But there are a variety of. Organizations that our council is involved in. National League of Cities. You know, there's, I'm, I'm a part of the big coalition, so I'm traveling around the state on a quarterly basis as well. And I think all of those organizations are beneficial to each council member. So not to pay their expense. I, I could not support any referendum that had that mention in it. When you look at, you know, all of these, and I'll give you an example. You know, we always say that Port St. Lucie is a similar sized city. It's a pre-platted community. Just a little more in population than we are. They're about 55% built out. I had the occasion last night to have dinner with a council member from Points, Port St. Lucie. And I asked them what their compensation is. Their council members make $70,000 a year. Their mayor makes $100,000 a year. In addition to that, they get a $500 a month allowance. For a vehicle allowance. So their total compensation in Port St. Lucie today, right now. Is 76,000 for a council member. And 106,000 for the mayor. You know, when you look at the one based on population. And Councilmember Cosden will probably remember because I think her and I were the only ones around then. Mayor Coviala brought a proposal forward very similar to number four in 2018. Unfortunately, we didn't move forward with it. Basically because of COVID, we thought it was a bad timing. At that time to really have a discussion on compensation. When a lot of our businesses and many of the residents, you know, were dealing with. COVID and either losing their jobs or losing their businesses. But I will tell you in 2018, the number that was used. Was 38 cents for the mayor. And 34 cents for the council members. And that was six years ago. So what I want to make sure that if we're going to put something in place that. You know, it, it reflects in the times that we're in today. I can tell you the. Research that I had done when we were talking about stipends. If you take similar sized cities. The mayor was making anywhere from 100 to 110,000 dollars. And council members were making between about 60 and 86,000 dollars. So that was where I found the ranges. Populated cities similar to us and, and similar cities throughout the state. So I think we have to make sure that, you know, we are in that, in that ballpark when we have this discussion. I think the number four option, the number's set too low. If you look at the other geographic cities of similar size. Pointing out Port St. Lucie again, knowing where they're at and their city is almost identical to ours. I think also like Councilmember Stiney had mentioned, it's important. And we can't do it in the referendum because. We only have so many words that we're able to utilize, but I think it's just as important to identify. The responsibilities and expectations of a council member. Me personally, I have no desire to pay somebody. For a full-time position if they're not putting a full-time commitment into it. So if you have a council member, and I think that's so important to at least either in our council rules. Or in an ordinance, if we are going to adopt an ordinance reflecting compensation. We have to be able to set that expectation as well. Because we all know today. No matter how much money, either a referendum or a stipend is given to a council member. The way the charter is written today is we only have to attend every third meeting. And that's it. We don't even have to come to the committee of the halls like we are today. It specifically states regular meetings in the charter. So in theory, we can show up about once every six weeks. And that's what our charter says we're allowed to do. I'm not saying we'll get reelected with that type of an approach. But I think it's more than just compensation that we have to address. So when you take a look at all of these. And when you look at what a majority of the other cities are doing, their compensation. And how they identify the expectation of the council members, it's all done by either ordinance or a resolution. So I would support that type of an approach. So we could have that discussion, that future discussion. Of what the expectation is and be able to set that as well. Because to me, both of those are married with one another. I have no desire giving somebody $80,000 a year if they're only showing up once a week for a three-hour meeting. So I think we have to make sure that we outline. So with that being said. With the options that we have presented here today. I think the best choice is option one, so we can clarify the expectation. We can put that in an ordinance. Of exactly what the responsibilities of a council member are and what the compensation is. And I think that we have to do some more research. And, you know, I, if you look up at the backup material, it's noted, you know, this is how they do it, or this is, it's done by ordinance. Or some of it's reflective on county commissioners pay, some's on population. I think what we, we have to get the hard numbers. Let's do the formula. Let's see what the cities are making, not just look at a formula. Like one of the other council members says, we put that formula to the voters, they don't know. So if I put, you know, 35 cents for a council member and 40 cents for a mayor. That really doesn't tell the, the community exactly what that is. So, you know, I think it's important that. Number one, because we are a growing city, there has to be some flexibility in it. Because things can change. There could come a point in time where we have either more boards or less boards that we're on. So we want to have that flexibility as well. So for me. If you look at all four of these, I think two, three and four still have some hurdles to get across. One is a little more open. Where I think we could have more of a discussion. One thing I don't want to do is just rush through this. Just because we feel we have to do something. I want to make sure we get it right. If that means we have more discussion, that's, that's exactly what it needs to be. If that means we need more information, which I think we do. And fine tune it. If we go with option one, at least we can still continue to have that opportunity to have that discussion. And we can fine tune it to make sure that, that we get it right. Additionally, I personally like the 2026. Start time only because. A majority of us that are here today that will be making the decision won't be here probably in 2026 or thereafter. So I think, you know, it's probably better for us to make the decision for the future councils versus. Trying to implement it. Sooner than that. So that's where I'm at. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Shepard.
Yes. I, I see good and bad in all four options. Not any particular one sticks out for me. And I think the reason is what was already said by some other council members. Is that I think the job description and. The expectation for what we're supposed to do is, is really. The most important thing to settle first. You know, I know I put a lot, a lot of hours in and it's not a part-time job for me, but. But I think we need to, to start there. And like I said, I don't want to repeat what, I agree with a lot that was already said. I'm not really happy with. Any of the four options. Thank you.
Okay. Councilman Hayden, I don't believe we've heard from you. Can we please have that pleasure?
Mr. City Attorney, I think, I think you got your answers. I, I don't think this is, any one of the options are close to, to being ready. And I don't believe they're going to be ready for this election cycle.
And so. I have, I, do you want me to try to bring it back to you on the committee of the whole or? Or is there so much?
Well, again, and I'll finish my comments, but. I, I, you know, I think we're trying to rush through this without any satisfactory. Positioning on any one of the, of the issues. You know, there seems to be some intent moving forward of defining job description, which I think is going to be difficult. And each, each one of us up here knows the amount of time we put in and what that value, what that value is to each of us. But setting up job descriptions similar to the private sector will be difficult because we answer to, to one group and that's the electorate. Defining, you know. That will become subjective because one person does it one way and he thinks probably he or she thinks that. Everybody else should be putting in the time that they do, but valuing time and how that's structured is up to the individual and, you know. There may be one person that is able to accomplish a tremendous amount of responsibility and opportunity. In the space of two or three hours where one person, another person may drag their feet and get that same amount of work done in two weeks. But at the end, are you accomplishing the same thing? So, you know, I. The discussion can take place on job descriptions, but I think that'll be difficult. We each have to reach inside our own souls and know what we're putting into the job. And. You know, and the compensation that may be reflective of the amount of work we, we do. And you'll see that in the private sector. Somebody may make $80,000, but maybe doing half the work of somebody else that's making $80,000. So. To, to position ourselves with. A level of responsibility that will be met will be as difficult probably as this discussion that, that we're having now. But I don't. I said it a couple of weeks ago, you know, I, I think we're trying to push something through, through because of other factors. And I'm not sure that's the right way to approach this. Do I believe it should go before voters? Absolutely. And that's never been a question in my mind, but, you know, let's have something that makes sense, I think, to the voters where there isn't. Complications or confusing information, especially for referendums on a presidential year that'll be at the bottom of the ballot. Which is always, which, which always can be a, a difficult, a difficult factor. So. You know, there's a possibility this November that five seats could change out. Discussions may be different, you know, at that particular point. It could be the possibility that three members are reelected and only two seats. Change out. So. The fact that we're all over the board on hybrids and option two and option four. There's no clear direction for you in this conversation. And I don't think there's going to be clear direction for you in a couple of weeks. I don't think anybody's position is leaning so much one way that they'd be willing to change in a couple of weeks from where they are. You've had. Four council members that I think have said that, yeah, none of these options work for me and I'm, and I'm probably in that camp. You know, I appreciate your work on it, bringing it up for discussion, which is what we should do. But in my opinion, it's not ready now. It's not going to be ready in two weeks. I think. If we run a future discussions about how that compensation factors into a fit on. Job responsibilities, fine. And then possibly maybe in 2026. The, the council then will be at a, in a better position to have something put on the vote, on the ballot for voters to decide. Thank you.
Councilman Stiney. Councilman Steinkie.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, in all of the verbiage that's put in these, and the ones that begin by eliminating payment for expenses, is it possible to replace that with repealing the legislation that established the stipend?
No, because it's not in the original charter. The language that I did in number four is the mechanism by way of which that would be accomplished. Because the repeal of that resolution requires an actual resolution of repeal.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I don't see any lights on. But to Councilman Hayden's point, I think we're not in any better shape than we were when we started this discussion, which makes it particularly troublesome.
So here's what I'm going, for the record, because we do memorialize the action taken by the Committee of the Whole or the direction. At this point in time, I do not have any legitimate consensus where I can formulate a appropriate referendum to encapsulate all of the individual representations made by UA, and therefore, I'm not going to be able to move forward with anything, and thus it will end as of today. That is where I sit right now. That is my understanding.
Understood. So that's a crossroads we're at, I guess. Is there one to Councilman Hayden's point that we could maybe get behind and say, this one, but we're really close, and it's this one, but, you know, we would like this? Doesn't sound like it.
Yep.
I don't even know that it would be worthwhile to take a consensus to do that.
No, no. I'm just taking, this is, you know, at the end of the day, you know, this is a Committee of the Whole, you do not vote. I've heard you all, I've heard the distinctions in each one of you, and therefore, there is no mechanism by way of which I can move forward with any legitimacy where there would be something brought before you that is supported by a majority of you.
Councilman Steinkie.
For me personally, I don't believe we give up the ghost right now. We've got, we've got, we've got two other opportunities, it sounds like. There has been some general consent on some component pieces. And so to, to not give up and for the city attorney to try to take what he heard today, maybe what we can do is ask for two to be brought back based on what we've heard. Take the four, narrow it down to two based on, based on what's been, what's been said. That's just where I would stand right now. If it was a quit, or let's see if we can't get this done in time. If it's, if it's, if it's down on the ballot and no one votes on it, so be it. But at least we tried. And that's, and that's where I stand on it.
Okay. Councilman Shepard?
I agree with what was just stated. Thank you.
Okay. Interesting. So that puts me in a position. I guess at this point, then, we would, if I understood correctly from Councilman Steinkie, maybe try to take a poll as far as everyone's two that they would pick with a qualified two with regards to the modify, I mean, that becomes a mess. We've all, we've already done that to some effect.
I've heard, you know, from Councilmember Steinkie, Councilmember Shepard, is there any additional support or direction in that regard, in which case I will execute on that direction?
Okay, so then the question becomes move forward or let it die?
That's correct.
I guess we'll start at the bottom. Actually, we'll start down there with Councilmember Carr.
I would support continuing forward. I mean, we've got time. It's a discussion. It doesn't cost us anything to do that. If we can narrow it down to a couple, I think that would be beneficial. I did hear some discussion, you know, about the negatives and positives about the, kind of the two and four seem to be, I mean, the mayor mentioned number one, but I think two may be able to, maybe encapsulate what he's looking for in some way, and the dollar, the per capita number maybe could be modified upward, or maybe put with a real number, not just a per capita calculation. So I would favor going forward if we can come up with a couple. I don't want to come back with four again. I think if we can narrow it down to a couple that we can have more work done on to clarify some of the finite points that the city attorney did pick up on and bring it back on the eighth at our next COW, just to, one more shot. If it doesn't work out on the eighth, I think we're out of time. But I think right now, we do have more time, so why not take it and try to come to some consensus? That's where I stand.
Well, now we're just reaching, you know, we're scrambling, we're panicking, trying to come up with something to, you know, put on the ballot, and we have two weeks to do it in. You know, that's not a really great way to reach some sort of resolution that, moving forward. You had four people that didn't agree with any of the four, the way they were written. That's not a consensus. You had your consensus. Now we're going back and we're redoing. It's a do-over. You know, it just, it doesn't make any sense when we can take the time and look at it a little more objectively and realistically than, okay, we got to do it, we have to do it this year. Well, you know what? We don't. So, no, I don't think we're gonna, it's going to be any different in two weeks than it is, than it is right now.
I say we continue at it. The only way we're going to get it done is to keep talking about it. Whether these options are what we all agree upon or not, whether we get it on the ballot for this term, if we don't, then we're looking at two years from now, where this will get addressed again. And then something else will come up, and it'll still be undressed. So I have no problem putting more time into addressing this and getting ourselves away from what was called an archaic style, keeping it in the charter. So I don't want to just say, oh, we didn't have it on these four, so let's stop talking about it and not work on it. So I say yes, let's see if we can find something. I don't mind scrambling to get something on the ballot this year. There has been a lot of talk about everything. I think putting it to the people to at least to show that we're doing this is worth continuing. Thank you.
Yeah, for me, I agree with Councilman Hayden. I think it's a worthwhile discussion, but it's not one that I think we're going to have any legitimate consensus from, you know, within the next two weeks. And so for that reason, for staff resource resources alone, I would agree to, you know, move this discussion further, but not rush it for the two-week timeline. I mean, we've talked for an hour now, really in many different directions, about something that I think we have to encapsulate in, what'd you say, 75 words?
75 words for the ballot.
Correct. So it's, to me, an insurmountable task with the timeline that we're given, and so for that, I would say that we continue the discussion, but we don't force it in the next two weeks. Mr. Shepard?
I would like to continue.
Continue.
That puts me in a tough situation.
So we've got the mayor.
Do you want to get the mayor first?
I'll, yeah, I'll let you go last for a change. Mr. Mayor, if you, if you could, please.
All right, I'll take, get Councilmember Cosden off the hook if she would like. You know, I think in two weeks, we're probably going to be in the same exact position that we are today, right now. You know, one option, and we haven't talked about, that I think is a viable option, and I think actually a better option. And, you know, I know if you look back, we've had the Charter Review Board. But one thing that we may be able to do, and I would recommend waiting to the next council is seated after November, but in January, we could try to put together a citizens' board that can start the discussion and give them the information and get a recommendation from them. And I don't know what size that board needs to be, but, you know, if you say, okay, let's establish a board of seven community members to have that discussion where they're not on a timeline, I almost feel that we got our backs up against the wall, and we just want to do something to say we did something. Well, to me, that's not the right way to approach it. I want to, like I said before, I want to make sure we get it right. So maybe we could get, we could have a citizens advisory board that's appointed after the next council is, you know, put in place, and they can start having that discussion, and we can be better prepared for 2026. So I think as Councilmember Hayden stated, just a referendum alone is going to be better in that year than in a presidential year. Also, I think we're just trying to rush, just to say we did something, and I don't agree that's the best approach. So for me, I guess, I don't think in two weeks, we're going to be any better than we are today. So my suggestion would be to do nothing, and hopefully the next council, and I would even make that recommendation maybe in January, that we put some type of a committee together to do some research and give them the time that they need, get a recommendation, and then bring it back to the new council for the 2026 election. So that would be my choice. Thank you.
You're up.
Thank you. I actually agree with the mayor. I think this is important, and I wish we could have done this today, but it's not going to happen. I don't think it'll happen in two weeks, and I think we should have included the citizens in this discussion with the Charter Review Commission or something similar. This is a big thing, and I don't want to rush through it. And I see little harm in waiting two years. Thank you.
I've got direction.
Okay. I see Councilmember Carr, is your light still on, or am I just a bad DJ? Okay, thank you. All right. That concludes the discussion. Moving on to the next item agenda is item five, roundtable discussion. Do we have any roundtable discussion? Let's remember Steinkie.
Thank you. What I'm asking for is permission to participate in our shade meeting via telephone. I'm responsible to be at the Tourist Development Council's project review workshop at 2:00, and I'll never have enough travel time to be in our 1:00 shade here and make it downtown Fort Myers by 2:00. And there's a, there's a phone-in number that will allow me to get into the conference room where the shade meeting will be held, and I'm asking for your permission to participate by phone.
I don't have any particular issue with it. Does anyone else? I see that the city attorney has his light on to maybe, no? Accidental press? Or, Councilman Carr? Oh, that was the next topic. Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you. Just real quickly, how's the, when is the shade meeting scheduled? Was it directly after the COW meeting? Mr. City Attorney, can you enlighten us on that, please?
Yes. So right now, as it is scheduled, I apologize, let me get there.
1:00, I believe?
I believe it's 1:00.
I believe it's 1:00 is when it's scheduled, and again, this is authorized pursuant to Florida law because of the sensitivity of the topic that you are discussing. So it'd be great if we could stop talking about it in public.
And Mr. City Attorney, do we have the availability to move that 1:00 meeting up?
I don't see where that would be a problem pursuant to Florida law. I just have to get, I have to, I have to talk with the city manager because he's over at the EOC. So we're juggling a couple of different things right now. So I, for, pursuant to law, it's not a problem. So.
Yeah, my recommendation, if we can move it up, we're, well, I guess 11:42 your time, I'm at 10:42, so I guess we're not moving it. I'm willing to move it up if the rest of the council has that desire. So that may help Councilmember Steinkie's issue, you know, if we move it up. So I'm okay with that, but I'll defer to my colleagues on exactly how they want to do it.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I see Ms. Brunz has stepped forward to maybe provide some insight here.
I just wanted to announce to council that we do have two participants from the consultant. So I would need to check with their calendar for their availability, and I can get back with council at noon to tell you the response.
Okay, so why don't we just dispense of the first request by Councilmember Steinkie, I guess with regards to, regardless of when it is, is he okay to appear?
I get it.
Remotely, which is fine. I don't have an issue with that. And then I guess with regards to the timing, there's not anything we can do here at this point, since you've got some backend work, and it's only an hour away, so it's not likely that that's going to change, I wouldn't think.
I can certainly pursue it and reach out to all of council and the other invitees at noon. And I would know at that point.
And that can change after this meeting without any legal requirements?
Correct.
Understood. All right. With that being said, does anyone have any issues with Councilman Steinkie appearing remotely, whenever that might be? Okay, great. Any other roundtable discussion? All right. So time and place of future meetings, a regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for...
We have 12.
I'm sorry, we do have someone.
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was the city attorney that spoke.
I do want to say that in the event that we do move the meeting up, we'll notify you immediately.
Okay.
Thank you. Very quickly, I just wanted to let council and then the public know that we have an Arbor Day ceremony at Joe Coviello Park on April 26 at 10:00 a.m. So everyone is invited to attend. There are going to be 140 trees will be planted at the park at the time. We also have Culture Fest coming up on Saturday, April 27, at Cultural Park. It will be from 11 to 4 p.m. for the public to attend. It's a free event. And last but not least, this is Administrative Professionals Day. So I'd like to have a, give a shout out to the administrative professionals in the city manager's office, Liz and Cheryl, who keep us going in the right direction and make sure we get to where we're supposed to be. And then also give a shout out to all the rest of the administrative professionals in our organization. If the truth be told, they are actually the ones that hold the organization together. So happy Administrative Professionals Day.
Agreed. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Brunz?
Thank you. I have learned that the consultants and all other participants are available for a 12:30 start.
Perfect. I guess we have a consensus that that's okay to move that forward 30 minutes to 12:30?
And Mayor Gunter.
Mr. Gunter, or Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, that's fine with me.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
We don't need any action on that. Okay. Okay, now, we will move forward to item six, time and place of future meetings. Regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council is scheduled for Wednesday, May 1, 2024, beginning at 4:30 p.m. in council chambers. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? When you adjourn?